Local School District Board of Education, regular meeting Monday, May 11th, 2020. Want to call the roll, please?
Ms. Ennis.
Here.
Ms. Step.
Here.
Ms. Russell.
Here.
Mr. Stark.
Here.
Mr. Habermill.
Here.
All members present.
Right, number three, treasure comments. Is that just? I have number three treasure comments, is that just to play your game, or you got?
Uh, no, I didn't have any comments. I think that was more or less the effects of the state budget, and I'll discuss that a little further down in the meeting here tonight.
Okay. All right, number four, Pledge of Allegiance. We're gonna stand, or we're just gonna do it?
Yeah.
All right.
Oh, look at that.
My allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic, for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice.
And, uh, number six, student liaison report, we do not have one this month, and number seven legislative report.
Okay. The last meeting, we had, um, the OSBA was, uh, watching 111, 111, or monitoring 111 bills, and there was one enacted. Since then, we now have 130 that they're monitoring, and two haven't been acted, so another one has been acted, and that is, um, House Bill 197 revisions, and that's, uh, that's the name of it, is the Tax Code Streamlining and Correction Act, to make technical correction changes to the laws governing taxation, making other changes regarding the COVID-19 emergency, and to declare an emergency. So, that's, uh, that's what's been, that's what's new, so. That's.
All right, thank you. Moving on, item number eight, reports, we'll start with Phil Superintendent's report.
We have Karen Blackburn with us tonight. She's our Special Ed Director and Coordinator. Karen has to do an annual report that's required by state law. She's prepared some slides, and she's going to talk about IDEA, so Karen, if you want to go ahead and start, that'd be great.
Sure, let me pull my slides up here. Okay. So, like Phil said, this is our annual report. The purpose of this report is to share information with the public, and allow them the opportunity to provide input on how we should spend our federal dollars for special education services. So what I did for you is just a comparison between last year and this year's numbers for students with disabilities. So our first one is students who are on 504 plans. Last year, we had 88 students, this year, we had 90, and I broke those down by building, so that you can see where they're at. We had seven open enrolled out of district last year, we had five this year. We had one open enrolled to our district last year, and we have two this year. And then, of course, the numbers are spread out. We saw slight increases at the middle school and high school, but nothing that has me terribly concerned. Students with disabilities, these are kids who are on IEP plans. Last year, we had 359 students, this year, we had 328. We saw the biggest decrease of students at our high school. Last year, we had 111, and this year, we had 86. Our numbers were about the same at EHOV. Middle school stayed about the same, and Saylorway stayed about the same. Last year, at our preschool, we had 29, and this year, we had 31. Our open enrollment numbers out of district went down a little bit, and those open enrolling in district or parentally placed at our non-pub schools, or district placed at separate facilities, stayed the same. I broke this down by disability categories again. Last year, I remember commenting that we had a high number of kids with autism in the district. That number's gone down, and I would say the kids who are qualified under emotional disturbance, that number also decreased quite a bit. Our numbers of SLD decreased, and everything else stayed virtually the same. This is the breakdown of staffing at each of our buildings. So in the district, we have 31 total intervention specialists. We have two adapted physical education teachers. We have three occupational therapists or therapist assistants. We have two physical therapists and physical therapy assistants. We have two speech-language pathologists that are employed in district, and then we also have two that are out of district that are hired through Mercy, and we have one transition coordinator. And that's broken down by eight intervention specialists at Vermillion Elementary School, and that does include our preschool. Eight that are at Saylorway Middle School, and 12 that are at Vermillion High School. My recommendation for utilization of funds for next year is very similar to what we did this year. I recommend that we use our funds for teacher salaries, salaries for our educational aids, supplies and materials, professional development, and any contracted services such as our OTPT and speech-language pathologists. These are the list of services that we actually have in each building. So we have our preschool classrooms, we had community-based classrooms for our mod-intense students with disabilities. We have behavior support room and services at the elementary inclusion services. We have executive function training that this year is being done through Ohio Guidestone, and we have adaptive physical education. Very similar services at Saylorway Middle School with the addition of some resource room services for English and math. And then at the high school, we have community-based services, behavior supports, executive functioning course. We have our workforce development. We have our transition coordinator, academic preps. We have double-dip classes that allow kids to take general ed and then get extra support in a resource room for that same subject. Inclusion classes, adaptive PE, and some resource room services. So at this time, it would be normally where we allow for public participation and ask for their input on how we should spend our federal funds. Since we are just kind of recording this and presenting that out, I added in here my email address, that the public can email me with their input and suggestions for how to improve programs and spend our funding. I think that's it.
Thank you.
That's good, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board on anything presented?
No, not from Ethan.
Do, um, Justin, do any of the budget cuts from the state affect the IDA funds?
No, not at this time. As Karen said, if anyone from the public has any questions, please send us an email, and we will get back to you right away on anything that you saw within that presentation that you might have a question about.
Okay, great.
The next item on the Superintendent's report is a COVID-19 review, and I'm gonna ask the board to stop me anytime, because I don't want this to be too lengthy, but I also want to try to cover this, some of the things that have happened in the past, the present, and going forward. So I'm gonna just try to give an overview of what's happened. We all know when this virus struck, that it was pretty sudden, and we had to make some quick decisions. And we had our students stay home for the one day. Our teachers came in, made some preparations. And really, within the next week, right after that, then we were closed and offering instruction either online or through a packet that we had sent home to the elementary students. So the instruction has looked a little bit different at all the schools, but now we're pretty much been able to, by getting devices out to the students and families that didn't have them at first at that elementary level, to get that instruction through our teachers online. Our teachers have worked hard to make these presentations and make the lessons and do things through the technology. I think our district was poised more than most for this to happen, but you still can't ever totally be prepared. When Sean and I have been talking, I think that what we said was that this is more than, the title we can give it, I guess, is it's a digital, it's an online emergency-type learning that's taking place. Even though we might have been prepared more than other districts, it still is not the way we're gonna need to have that look. And I'll touch upon that as I go a little bit further into this. The board, I could tell you this, that after doing some studies of this through our students, we're looking probably at about 30% of our kids that we're not reaching. That's a lot. But that's pretty indicative of what's going on everywhere right now. And phone calls, contacts have been made to those parents. It's not that we haven't been able to make contact with the kids and the families we have, but they're just still not responding back to us with assignments, even after contacts have been made. So whatever this is going to look like, if it's gonna involve digital learning next year, it will have to be different than that. Expectations, platforms, thought processes will all need to shift. So we'll plan that, we'll look at that, and we'll come up with options, and we'll discuss that with you and the board and in front of the community, and let them know what those things will look like, depending on what the state's gonna do. So as we send out communication, and one of the things that we've tried to do in our district that I think that it always can be better, whatever we do, we seek to improve and make it the best that we can. We've done our, a lot of communicating with the community through our videos, through email, through the digital communication, and we'll continue to do that throughout this entire process. An important step that we made, that you all know, was that we put a grading scale out there that was for the third and fourth quarter, that went from an A to a C, and we told people, told our students and families, that no one will get less than a C. And we set that grading scale up to be from 81 to 100% was an A, 61 to 80% was a B, and 20 to 60% was a C. And then anyone below that 20% was gonna get a pass. So as I've told you, we've got 30% of our students that we're not making contact with, so you know that they're in that pass range right now. We're gonna need to look to do something to intervene and get those kids to pass. Charlie?
Yeah, for that grading scale, though, wasn't it if, I mean, below 20%, it wasn't just a free pass, they had to make some attempt, correct?
So when we said it was a 21, uh, 20, anything below 20%, that didn't mean then that by us giving the pass, that you could sit home and do nothing. You had to put out effort. You had to work, you had to show teachers that you were working towards passing your classes. So we are gonna have a percentage of our students that will not be passing right now, and we're working on that daily. They've got until June 9th is the end of the grading period. So from May 23rd through June 9th, we did say that that was gonna be a time that they could be doing some social and emotional learning lessons that were not gonna be turned in to, to the teachers. However, those kids that are behind, no matter what your grade is, their work will still be accepted, whether you're in this, in the pass category or C through A. If some assignments you haven't turned in, you're still gonna have the opportunity to turn those in.
Okay.
So we're trying our best to give these students and families that are struggling opportunities to catch up, to make this up. This has been devastating for a lot of families, as I'm sure we all know. You hear of different families that are in different situations, and it's tough. Not an easy situation for a lot of families.
Have you talked to other districts, are they about the same percentage?
Yeah, so once a week, on both sides of the county, sometimes more than once, I attend a, a regional superintendent meeting that at least 16 to 24 superintendents are on the line representing their districts. We're, everyone's in the same situation. And we even have a couple of Cuyahoga County superintendents, one in Bay, as a matter of fact, then. They're, of course, not struggling quite as much as everybody else, but they're still having a difficult time. This is an emotional drain on everybody, because you instantly switched to an unexpected delivery of instruction.
Have we made contact with every student?
We have. So multiple calls go out all the time at every school. The principals, the assistant principals are calling. Phil Brickner has helped us out with that, Jen Bengal, Lisa DeLeese, Beth, Bobby, Matt. Everyone's called home, we've made contacts with everybody.
And we got devices out to a lot of people also.
That's right, so.
Heard a lot of positive about that.
Yeah, so when we, we asked the families that needed the devices to come and get them, we did pass a lot of them out. Whoever needed them was able to pick them up and get them. So we've reached out and communicated a lot to people. That doesn't mean that we've been perfect by any means, but that's what we've done. We've also made an adjustment to the grading period. I believe that that was a good decision to make, because of all of this emotional strain, we've got, we've heard some input, and you're gonna hear both sides of this. I'm sure that as a board and as a district, we're gonna create or get some controversy created by the decisions that we've made, because not everyone's going to agree that it was the right thing to do to shut the grading period down on the 22nd of May. You've got some of those high-achieving students that are saying, how is that fair? Why I've worked so hard as a student, and now my grades don't mean as much? I can't disagree. It's a tough question to answer, and a decision has to be made. And I think as a district, we had to look at what's best for everybody as a whole. It's not necessarily as the individual, but what's going to try to alleviate the burden for most everybody that's in the situation? And some of those kids that aren't struggling, that's great, and we understand that, and we'd like it to be more academically rigorous and would have liked to continue. But the truth of the matter is that they'll need to continue with their parents to keep themselves more internally motivated and do more with their families to help, and we'll continue providing work for them too. And we know that their families will help them to, to keep that high level up. And for the ones that are not, though, that's the ones that we're struggling with. Our teachers are working hard to continue to try to reach them. So tough situation here that we're facing. And we've done our best to communicate and do everything that we can, as much as we can, but that's not to say that we can't do more. Every day, we're looking to see what can we do better? What can we do more? How can we make this situation better? So we're getting ready to provide lessons for social and emotional learning after May 22nd, so on May 23rd. As a district, we're giving teachers some of those lessons that will be more enrichments and emotionally health-oriented. And this will be a way for us to reach out to the community and help as much as possible. And then we will shut down June 9th. I think that unanswered question is still, what do we do during the summertime? One of the things that impacted us to a big degree, unfortunately, was the governor's recent decision to cut budget. We didn't offer summer school last year, and it's an expense, and you don't want to necessarily look at just the expense side of this in a dire situation. So that's a discussion that we can have or talk about a little bit right now. I'm not sure what the board's feelings are about offering intervention. One thing that does have to happen is that special ed instruction needs to take place with some of those students that are on an IEP that call for that type of instruction that needs to continue. Karen is prepared to do that. But we do, for sure, need to look at those kids that are gonna need the intervention to catch up, but that's a big undertaking as well, too, if we're gonna think about offering some sort of summer school. And usually, just so you know, when we've done it in the past, it's been online.
I was just gonna ask you, how'd we do it last year, then?
It wasn't done last summer, but the summer before that, it's through online instruction.
So even those on an IEP last summer that, that needed intervention, we didn't do any of that?
We did, the, I'm, that's the only population that that never stops with.
Okay.
That has to continue. Karen, you want to speak a little bit to that?
Yeah, we didn't have many kids last year. I think we had three to five that received services. They received direct services that are specific to the goal in which they have issues of regression with. So teachers look at data and make those determinations as a team. Right now, we have two kids who have qualified for this summer, potentially a couple more that we haven't had meetings on yet, but it's a very small number. In light of COVID, we've been instructed that we should probably continue to look at online learning. Otherwise, you have to have the health department's approval of your plan of how you would do that in person. And so I think at this point, it's probably just safer. And the students that we're looking at doing it with, one has had great success utilizing online instruction with her instructor, so that should be a successful plan.
Okay.
I think.
How many do we usually have, and do we usually have some students that are also in summer school but not on intervention?
Yes.
What's that number?
I've offered summer school, there have been students that have taken that opportunity. I don't have numbers, so I'll, I'll share those numbers with you and let you know in the past how many students have done it. We did have the discussion, we had a labor relations meeting with our Vermillion Teachers Association this morning, and we talked about this, and no, nothing was determined, because I said it's something that I think we still need to give some thought to. There's a lot of factors that go into it, that we'll need to talk about and need to plan and think about. And this is a very unusual summer because of the situation.
Okay.
So I'll get back with you on this. Look for more information from me to come about numbers from previous summer school. And let us talk with our administrative team and with Justin from the budget end, and we'll, we'll try to come up with a little bit more conclusive information as we move along.
When do we need to have a final decision by?
We've got some time on that, because it wouldn't be until the second or third week in June.
Okay.
So we've got a little bit of time.
Okay.
We, from a, from this virus standpoint, continue to serve meals to our, our families. Amber Stoller and her group of volunteers that I recognize every week for doing that have done, have done an amazing job. And I hope that when we can do a live board meeting in the future, that we can bring them in and recognize them for their effort, because they've been with us from the beginning, and they have done a really nice job of serving families. And I usually put that number of meals out that they serve, and it's like 219, or it's, it's over almost 2,000 meals, but they're serving at times in the pack so many families. It's, it's amazing, so.
Great.
Uh, we'll continue doing that up until June 9th. I think that that's our last date that we're scheduled with that. We are talking to that group of volunteers and thinking about what needs to be done during the summer. And there might need to be some different options for that, because that's a pretty difficult undertaking for that group. So I'll let you know how that goes forward, but preliminarily thinking, right now, we might need to look for some alternatives during the summertime, and we don't usually serve meals. As you know, during the summertime, our students have looked for options. Another option that we recently, we recently had was through Second Harvest, and Sarah Sargent put that together at the elementary school, and there was a huge serving of families in need there. So we'll look at different options, and we'll let you all know.
Are there any other community organizations that have provided big help in the summer in the past?
Pardon me?
Are there any other community organizations that have done that in the past? Help with feeding families that need it?
I believe some of the churches have some options and opportunities. We'll talk with the Chamber of Commerce, and we'll talk with the churches, and we'll make sure that we're gonna find a way.
Okay.
In terms of what this might look like going forward, superintendents across the state have been waiting for information to come from, from the state and from the health departments. And I just got an email a couple hours ago, and that email is saying that the week of May 18th, the Ohio Department of Ed and the Health Department are gonna share a restart plan. And in that restart plan, it's gonna give some guidance. The Ohio Department of Ed right now is more into the guidance aspect of this and, and giving local control to the schools as much as possible at the school level. But then you've had the health departments that have stepped in, and I'm gonna touch on that in the next topic, which is the graduation. The health departments have had a little bit more, or quite a bit more, to say than the Ohio Department of Ed. So we're waiting on that statement to come from the Ohio Department of Health as well, saying what social distancing looks like for next year. We're gonna be needing to then make our plans based on that statement from them. And that's gonna determine a lot of what this is gonna look like. We've, we've had multiple options in the works and planned, and we'll share that out with all of you and the community then, as soon as we hear that. And that could look in a variety of ways. It could be, we, here's what we know, that just like all of the community is saying, people have to try to get back to work somehow, and we realize that for sure. And especially our elementary families, this has probably been the biggest burden on our elementary families, because the young kids need someone to watch them. And it's intense to do that work. I've got grandkids that are of that age, and I know, Sarah, you've got young kids. It's intense to be working on this work, and, and Crystal, you, you too. Uh, I, I know that you're spending a lot of time with them, and Chris, you've got a couple of young ones or one young one at home for sure, and this is not easy. So we're probably gonna be, as a district, putting our concentration for sure on those elementary families and kids, but that doesn't mean that we won't look at other options, too. If it's gonna be a staggered schedule, we don't know. Until that directive comes out, we can't have a definite plan. I'm sorry that we can't be more definite with you all right now as, as a community. For the people that are listening to this board meeting, this is not easy for us to tell you this kind of news. We don't like not having a definite plan right now, but. This is not easy for us to tell you this kind of news. We don't like not having a definite plan right now, but we'll let you know as soon as possible. The other thing then that affected this was the budget. Justin's gonna touch on that more in his treasurer's report, but we had a pretty devastating cut here. And we're not wanting to scare our teachers or community or our, our staff, but we're gonna need to look at this across the board and see how we're gonna have to make some adjustments because we need to balance our budget as best as possible. And within the midst of all of this, in addition to do, doing this planning, we're gonna need to look at how the staffing of this needs to look. And how that's gonna affect it because we've lost just in these couple months, that budget cut four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, Justin? Is that the number?
That's the number, yeah.
All right, and then one year, and then the twelve months going forward, I think we're looking at about another million dollars minimum and that's conservative, probably more. And once again, you'll touch on this within your budget uh, report out today that we're looking at a mil, another million on top of that. So that's a lot of money that we're looking at as a district. Governor Dewine is gonna be on our next Friday superintendent meeting and he asked a question of what this budget will maybe look like going forward in the next fiscal year. Because we want to see how much that's gonna impact us. Unfortunately, our community is property rich, or we look like we're property rich. And so that impacts us. Did I say that right, Justin?
Oh, you said that correctly. Ohio Department of Education, it doesn't really look at income or wealth or anything like that. It really bases everything on the valuation per pupil. And because Vermillion's land has Lake Erie and is, and is highly valuable. Um, and the number of students that attend Vermillion local schools. When you compare that by school district across all the state of Ohio, Vermillion's up there in the top twenty-five percent. Now, they're not up there income wise, but they are up there based on property values.
So that form of funding schools, as we all know, has been around forever and it's not necessarily fair, but that's what we're dealt with right now and that's what we're going to have to work with. And so we'll, I'll get back with you again, as we said, and tell you what this all needs to look like in terms of staffing and adjustments because it'll have to look different. So it's that good news with, with what's happened with that budget in addition to this virus on top of it. So it's been a double whammy here. So that really concludes what I have to tell you about the coronavirus and where we were, where we are and where we're going. And where we're going is undetermined until we get that more information from the state. So the next thing I want to touch upon on my report is the graduation. And Shelley and the board has received some letters from the community. Shelley's gonna read those letters out to the community. And then I'd like, I, I'd like to just tell you from our point of view why we made some of those decisions. So Shelley, if you could read one letter at a time and then I'll respond. And board, please chime in and say what you'd like to as well.
Okay, um, so these are the comments or questions that we have received. The first letter says, hello, I am hoping the Board of Education will consider changing the graduation ceremony. When Mr. Pemben first arrived in Vermillion, he told us we needed to look outside the box. Well, now I'm asking him and the board to look outside the box for graduation. Our seniors have been deprived of many activities, which I know are out of anyone's control, but they deserve to be recognized in a better way. Our graduation is later than most, so we should have longer to plan for one. Neighboring communities in both Lorraine and Erie Counties are being creative in their graduation and award ceremonies. And I see no reason why our district cannot do the same. If you want examples, I will give them in another email, but districts are able to have a more traditional graduation and award ceremony. There are districts having a two-part ceremony with students only at one and families at the second one. There are districts utilizing families staying in cars during the ceremony and allowing the entire class to watch each other graduate. There are even districts planning their graduation at the end of June, hoping the guidelines will be lessened. These districts have all the support and approval of the Erie County Health Department. This senior class has approximately a hundred and fifty students in the class, which is small compared to some others. In all cases, the district looked outside the box and that is what I'm asking Vermillion schools to do. Our seniors deserve nothing less. So that's the first one.
Okay, so that's a lot of information within the letter and our high school team and our administrative team has spent many, many hours discussing this subject and we don't disagree with a parent that we would have liked to have this look a lot different. And I did say in my previous report on the coronavirus that I've been attending meetings on two sides of the counties because we're split. Our, our school district is split between the two counties. I listened to what those schools and superintendents are doing in those schools. There are some outliers that are going to challenge, for lack of a better word, the recommendations that have come from the health departments and hold a outdoor type ceremony. Where they're gonna have kids on the football field or parents in the stands. I could tell you that that was our first best option as a school district. That's what we wanted to see. But when I listen to the health commissioners on both sides of the county, both sides of the county recommended that that is not, you're taking on a lot, a lot of liability unfortunately as a district with that type of possibility. Students are unfortunately in a time when they're emotional during that ceremony and the chances are that they're going to gather together in a large group and they're gonna celebrate. And it's hard to control. It's almost next to impossible to control. And then unfortunately, that makes us responsible for your children when that happens. We have always wanted as a board and as a district and as teachers to look out for safety as number one. So the reason why we made the decision to do a virtual graduation and then do a hybrid of it is to give as maximum amount of amenities as we can and as maximum amount of a senior year experience, but within reason and within safety. So there might be a few districts out there that are doing that. However, they're doing it at their own risk. They're doing it at the risk of students first, district second. And if things do happen, someone's going to have to answer to that. It's not that we don't want to answer to the community about this, but what we want to be able to answer to you all is that we've made a safe, responsible choice and we tried to make the best decision we could. We sent out a letter to the parents and I, I mentioned a hybrid type graduation activity. That's on May twenty-third and twenty-fourth where a map was provided and we'll pull that map up in a few minutes after Shelley reads the next two letters because they're similar. And that map allows for two cars to come, not one, two cars with family members and hopefully they're family members that are related and they're not gonna put people on those cars that are not family related. In car number one, those families, the mother and the father are going to be able to get off, to get out of the car, get on the stage with the graduate and do a handoff of the diploma on the stage between the hours of nine and three-thirty. And that will be done on two days, May twenty-third and May twenty-fourth. So that's an opportunity then for the family that's in car, the second car to be able to see their children graduate. And the, the family, the mothers and dads or the guardians can actually be on the stage with the students. It's not the greatest. It's not the best. We, we understand that. It's heartbreaking to not do this like we normally did it, but we believe based on what the health commissioners have told us that virtual is the best way to go. Well, we listened, but we also wanted to do as little contact as we could, but make it a hybrid and actually do that handoff of that graduation diploma on a stage. We heard that was a big one for our community. If you can't at least have kids on a field, then do something with the diploma itself. We listened and so this is what we've done.
Let me go the second one?
Yes, if you would please.
All right, second letter says, hello, hope all is well. I'm sending this email in hopes you will change your mind on this so-called graduation that's being planned. I'm a mother of a senior and it makes me so upset and mad that you're not trying harder to find a way to do something better for this class. I'm sure you have seen all the different ways other schools are doing graduation. Firelands is even waiting until summer to do prom and graduation. I feel like you are just rushing into getting this school year over with. What is going to happen with all the money that these kids and parents have raised for their prom and prom to dawn? My daughter has had all along with a lot of other kids, more than just their parents involved with them. Her grandparents have never missed a soccer game because they want to be a part of her life, but now they won't see her graduation. Or her stepdad who has been her, has been with her and helped raise her since she was three, won't be able to see her graduate. Please think about all the dreams you are taking away from these kids.
Okay, once again, a lot of information to cover there, but let me talk about the grandparents and the stepdad. By having those two automobiles there, I think that that should help solve some of that. It's not ideal, but it does allow them to be there, see their granddaughter or grandson get a diploma in person. And that answers or helps with that part of it. It's not one hundred percent the best. We understand that, but it's safety. And we'll have a minimum amount of people there on the stage and it will be as contactless as possible. But we're keeping this virus in mind and doing what the health commission thinks is the best, most viable option that can happen. Going back to later graduation times, so it was said, why can't we be creative and think about setting a later time? That has been thought about. We are thinking and planning and working on some sort of a celebration late into the summer. After this clears up, if and when we're able to do that. But that's an uncertain aspect now because we don't have a directive yet from the state for large gatherings. That involves a large gathering of our entire student body. And at this present time, that's not possible to do, but that doesn't mean that we're not planning. So we have an event planned for late July. Some schools have mentioned that there might be a possibility that they would think about redoing a graduation at a later date. I have not one hundred percent heard that any school is doing that for sure. That they're gonna have a graduation repeated, for example, a virtual one and then a repeated graduation at a later date. The problem that we saw with that was that we, we did survey our students. And we did survey our families. And one of the things that was heard loud and clear was that that diploma should be handed out, that we should listen to the guidance that was coming from the state and from the health department. And that if there was a choice, that you would want to do it sooner than later. I think that once kids reach a, a certain point of a time in the summer, that it's gonna be pushed to July, mid-July or August. There's not gonna be enough interest there possibly for those students to wanna re-attend a graduation ceremony and have them all come back. And that just would not be a very good ceremony if fifty percent of our kids would show up to a ceremony and we would hold a, hey, an official ceremony with only half of the population there. It would be just, uh, what's the word? It just, it would be sad in a way. I guess, I can't think of another word because it's not gonna be a joyous celebration if only half the class is there. So that's why we're thinking of a celebration type of an event later on where we could bring kids back, but not recreate the graduation. So that's the thought. That doesn't mean, once again, that we know it all or that we're perfect in our thought process, but we've been discussing this in multiple ways with multiple schools and I'm not hearing a whole lot different. That doesn't mean though that we shouldn't do something different if that's gonna make it better. We'll keep our minds open. We'll keep discussing this. We're not ruling anything out one hundred percent. But what we do know is we've established this graduation date. It will be virtual. It will be a hybrid. And I think that this is the best decision we can make.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Ready for the last one?
Yes, please.
All right, the third letter that we received just today. It would be a good decision on the school's part to reverse their decision on having a graduation ceremony. The young ladies and men deserve it after losing out on prom and the back end of their senior year. It seems it would be the right decision, seeing as the governor is opening up more and more places of business. There's enough room on the football field for the kids to practice social distancing and enough room in the stands for each student to bring up to four people. All the students are upset and that could make them not want to be part of the school in their future. Like attending football games. So make the right move and have a graduation ceremony.
I hear the emotion and the feeling and I, I understand and I wrote this parent back that that was the first best option. We would have loved to be able to do that. That's not the recommendation from the Board of Health. I don't think it's wise as a superintendent, as a district, as a board to go against health board regu, recommendations and thoughts about liability and concern for kids not following the social distancing aspect of this. As much as we love to see this happen, it just didn't seem the time. And that's why I recommended what I did to the board of, of having that type of ceremony and it's a tough decision. And we'll keep our mind open about the future though. But a decision did have to be made. And one thing that we hear loud and clear too is that people do want to make plans and know what to count on and what to expect. So we made the decision and I think that it was very hard and impactful to families. I know, don't think I know. So I'm sorry, families, that this didn't make everyone happy. Unfortunately, we can't make everyone happy in this situation, but we have to think about safety, liability and the health of everyone.
And I agree. I think that, uh, I know talking to you, Phil, that you and Lisa DeLeese have put a lot of time into this. It's not just a a quick fix. You've, you've thought about it a lot and I agree, we need to think of the safety of the students and the families and uh liability.
Yeah, I, I've talked to several parents and hear the emotion in their voices and I am just heartbroken for that, but I think it does, it comes down to the safety of it and we have a responsibility as a district to keep our kids safe and their families. And it trickles down, you know, and I, I just, I don't know how we could guarantee that that could be done safely.
Right.
I agree too. It's a, it's an unpopular um, decision and, and the, the emotion in it. I agree that the kids deserve a lot more, but the reality is you're doing the right thing and it's the right thing for everyone involved, so I appreciate, uh, I appreciate the decisions.
And it could, you know, like, we don't know what's gonna happen down the road, so it could change, you know, we're you know, we, maybe we could do one later on, but yeah, it, it all depends. Who knows what's gonna happen?
We'll keep our minds open. We'll keep our discussions going. And we'll, we do have plans for the seniors in addition to that walk across the stage. Not addressing that other letter of where the money has went. The money is going towards bags that are being put together for students that, that will have a variety of things in it for seniors. And that will be, that's where some of the money has been dedicated towards it. It has a whole variety of things in there, and I don't want to spoil that by telling the kids in advance what's coming. But our future advisors have been working hard on this. Angie Cafarell, Kara Habermill, they've been planning this, working on this, and hours and hours and hours have been spent. And I'm not complaining, and I'm not trying to say, oh, look at how much time we spend on this. This is our jobs. This is what we should be doing. But I could say that the emotions are high on our end, too, because it's heartbreaking for us to do this. This is something that our teachers and our community love and enjoy. Vermillion prom, Vermillion graduation has always been a jewel, and it's been something special, and it's, it's just not the same. We understand.
I was going to say, it's understandable how upsetting it would be for parents and families of these students, but as a board member, that's one of my favorite jobs on the school board, is being on that stage and watching the kids get their diploma. And I know all of you, too, and, and the teachers that show up in support for those kids. None of us want to see that not happen. I think that's everybody's goal, was to have that happen, but we just have to be safe.
One thing that I think, yeah, I agree, Sarah. One thing that threw a little bit of a curve ball at all of us was when the governor made an announcement at one point that did a 180-degree turn that said it looked like you could hold those events in a stadium, and you could have a large gathering. And then he reversed that decision the very next day, realizing he made a mistake. So this has all been documented at the state level of discouraging that type of an event where you're putting a lot of kids in one space. And that's, once again, why we did this virtual hybrid with cars and the passing out of the, of the diplomas. Amherst and Huron, for example, are doing a virtual graduation where the parents are coming into the building and will walk across the stage there. But it doesn't, that then, if you do it that way, and I'm not criticizing their school for doing it that way. So don't misunderstand that this is not a criticism of those two schools, but it's just a comparison, and it's only two. I know that, I'm sure parents can name a couple of schools that are going to be to the west of us that are going to try to do that drive-in, football-field-type ceremony. But that also does require possibly the okay from the city and the state, and I don't know whether they'll get that. Perhaps they will, but once again, it's, it's a, it's a risk. So at any rate, enough said, I think, on that for now. But, and we will communicate more out with that. I did have a slide that shows the map. I don't think it's, Sean's going to just put it up there. This is what the schedule or the drop-off then looks like, what the staging of that looks like, so that you can all see. This letter went home to parents, or this map and a letter along with it saying what this needs to look like, how it needs to look. And if there's any questions, once again, please make sure that you're sending emails to the principals or send it to us, and we'll get you the information that is needed. Questions have continued to come in on this, and so please don't hesitate to ask any questions. Sean, just put the letter up real quick so that the board can see what that letter looked like that did go out to the parents about the graduation walk. So that's the letter that went home to each and every parent of a senior. And back up one slide, if you would. This also gives a overview of some of the things that need to take place. We have another pickup of the cap gown and cords on May 15th in front of the high school from 1:00 to 2:00. And that walk, as I've said, is May 23rd and 24th with the car procession and the map. Laptop returns will take place on the 27th. Last day to turn in your assignments, June 3rd, and that virtual commencement on the 7th, June 7th, through District YouTube at 1:00. Thanks, Sean.
Good, thank you.
Sorry that took so long, that there's been a lot of things happening.
No, I think it's important that we, you know, take the time that's needed to discuss it so people understand what's taking place. Thank you. Any other questions for Phil on that? All right, thank you, Phil. Moving on, Part B, Treasures Report, Justin.
Number one, recommend a resolution to approve the financial report for March 31st, 2020, and also April 30th, 2020, and that is Attachment A.
I'll move.
Okay, um, if we take a look at April, March happened exactly as we, as we anticipated, but there was a little difference there in April's. Get to it here. So taking a look at the general fund revenue by month, through the month of April, the general fund has received $23.0 million compared to $23.15 last year, and then $23.3 in fiscal year 18, and $22.8 in fiscal year 17. So right now, from the general fund revenue point of view, we're right in line, and we're right on pace to where we collect historically at this time. Moving on to the food service revenue through the month of April, food service has received $432,000 compared to this time last year at $593,000, $519,000 in fiscal year 18, and $571,000 in fiscal year 17. So there's a couple of different things that's affecting our revenue. First and foremost, we did not receive a reimbursement from School Nutrition Program in July or August because we didn't sell any lunches. Historically, we've received June payments during the month of July. And then, again, if you remember back, we normally start school in August. This year, we didn't start until prior to, to just Labor Day there. So we, we've missed out on two months of revenue this year, just based on the timing of everything. And then, lastly, due to the COVID-19, the school not received the same amount of revenue that we historically have received. Part of that is just the, the number of lunches are way down. From March until April, we haven't received any reimbursement back yet. The revenue we received for that month was $212. And we still have expenditures coming out through salaries, benefits, and everything like that through food service program, along with the supplies. This month, though, in May, we were able to get some of that, so we will reflect, when we do this again next month, some more additional revenue in May that we didn't see in, in April. But that's something to be noted there, that our revenue in the food service is going to be down. And then, when we take a look at all funds by revenue, through the month of April, we've received $26.1 million compared to $25 million at this time last year, $25.23 million in fiscal year 18, and $25.37 in fiscal year 17. So again, we're on pace to receive slightly more revenue compared to years past. Couple of things, again, come into mind here. This can be attributed to a full-year collection of the safety levy, and then we also have the Student Wellness and Success Funds that were implemented by Governor DeWine's fiscal year 20 budget that we didn't have at this time last year. Looking on our expenditure side, again, looking at the general fund expenditures through the month of April, we've expended $19.7 million from the general fund compared to $18.7 at the same time last year, $19.5 in fiscal year 18, and $19.9 in fiscal year 17. So the district is currently on pace to spend right around what it did in fiscal year 18. And the reason we have such a large jump this year in expenditures compared to last year, we have negotiated salaries increased. We had a couple increases to health insurance and the dental insurance. And then we also had a large repairs to the high school parking lots, the elementary parking lot and the fieldhouse. And then we also hired additional intervention specialists this year. Looking at our food service expenditures by month, through the month of April, we've expended $663,000 in food service compared to $556,000 last year, $536,000 in fiscal year 18, and $513,000 in fiscal year 17. A couple of things, again, that we've been mentioning throughout the year. We, we've coded additional salaries toward food service, and we've also had a couple of large purchases and capital outlay there for the cafeterias. And then, lastly, when we take a look at all funds by month through the month of April, we've expended $22.9 million compared to $20.7 million in fiscal year 19, $21.3 million in fiscal year 18, and $22.2 million in fiscal year 17. So overall, we're on pace to spend slightly more this year than we have in years past. But again, that was anticipated. Again, that was a change in negotiated contracts. That was an increase in interventions, intervention specialists, and also some capital outlay items that we were putting off that we had to take care of this last year. But when we look at cash, we want to take a look at our general fund cash through the month of April. We have $19.3 million in cash compared to $18.8 last year, $17.8 in fiscal year 18, and $16.8 in fiscal year 17. So our general fund cash balance is doing well. Looking at food service cash, right now, or I should say, in April, the district had a total of $156,000 in food service compared to $337,000 last year, $249,000 in fiscal year 18, and again, $249,000 in fiscal year 17. So again, one of the things we want to look is, we have a enterprise fund, a food service fund that has a lot of cash in it, but we really can't do anything with that. So again, the, the goal was to bring that down a little bit, code additional items that we can code, and make sure that we're able to take some of the burden off the general fund because our food service fund balance was that high. All cash, so through the month of April, the district had a total of $22.5 million in all cash compared to $22.2 in fiscal year 19, $21.2 in fiscal year 18, and $20.4 in fiscal year 17. So again, our, our overall cash balance outside of the, not, I should say, not outside, but including the general fund plus every other fund, is a lot more stable than the general fund as you're seeing climb up there. And then, lastly, we want to take a look at our investments. Through the month of April, the district has earned a total of $264,732.04 on interest compared to $261,524.02 in fiscal year 19. So comparing this year to last year, so far this year, we've earned $3,208 more on interest, or 1.2%. Any questions regarding the financials here for the month of, through the month of April?
Right, call the roll, please.
All right, um, let me pull this up here. All right, for number one, recommend the resolution for the financial report for March, April. Everyone in favor, say aye.
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 Anyone opposed, say the same? All right, the ayes have it, 5-0. Number two, recommend a resolution to accept the following donations. $1,000 from Mike Zabo to the softball program, $90 from VABC to the bowling team, $100 from Jim McColl to the VTA Scholarship Fund, and $1,000 from Braddix for senior yard signs.
I'll move.
A second.
All right.
Call the roll.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All, all opposed, say the same? All right, motion approved, 5-0. Number three, recommend a resolution that the board approve the 2020/21 service agreement with North Point ESC for the Vermillion Local School District and St. Mary's School, and that is Attachment B.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Who was the second?
Crystal.
Crystal, all right.
Any questions?
This is the service agreement with North Point. I have all these written down here. This is the North Point Agreement, so this is just going to be items for EHOV, Special Ed, RMD students, and any, any other services that our students need throughout the year.
Okay, call the roll, please.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say the same? All right, motion approved, 5-0. Number four, recommend a resolution to approve the 2020/21 service agreement with Lorraine County ESC. That's Attachment C.
I'll move.
Uh, this is going to be the same thing. This is just, um, any type of services that our students need that we can get through, um, Lorraine County ESC.
Questions? All right, call the roll, please.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say the same? All right, motion approved, 5-0. Number five, recommend a resolution that the board approve the annual renewal of JAMF, our device management software, for $36,665 until June 2021.
I'll move.
All right. What this is, this just allows the IT department to back of student and staff devices for inventory purposes. It also allows for updates, and it also allows the ability to push software and changes to the devices that the students and staff have.
Okay.
Any questions? Call the roll, please.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say the same? Motion approved, 5-0. Number six, recommend a resolution that the board approve master service agreement with Meta Solutions for EMIS Fiscal and Student Information Systems for Schedule I in the amount of $29,664.25 and Schedule II in the amount of $7,792.40 for the 2020/21 school year, and that is Attachment E.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Uh, for Meta, this is renewing our Power Schools and our Progress Books. What is the number that they have there? It's based on a number per pupil. So what the, what they do is charge us $16.75 per pupil, and that's how they come up to that contract amount. But again, this is to renew Power Schools and Progress Book.
Any questions?
No.
All right, call the roll, please.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say the same? Motion approved, 5-0. Number seven, recommend a resolution that the board approve 2020/21 therapy service agreement with Mercy Health at $59 an hour, and that is Attachment F.
I'll move.
I'll second.
This is exactly what it is. It's just Mercy Healthcare, $59 an hour for therapy services if we need them.
Okay.
Call the roll, please.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say the same? Motion approved, 5-0. Number eight, recommend a resolution, the board approve the renewal contract for frontline education for applicant tracking and absence and substitute management at a cost of $7,691.02 for For the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school year, and that is attachment G.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Frontline, that's every single employee, if they need to request off, uh, whether it's sick leave, personal leave or vacation leave. Need to go into frontline. Um, enter their absence in there and whether or not they need to have a substitute, once they click on they need a substitute. Um, it's a second through Rachel Wixie or through our own staff, then we will uh. Uh, contact our, our sub list there to get a substitute in there. And then um, again, we also use it for our applicant tracking. So if we want to post up online. Um, applicants can click on there and go through the process and end up in H R.
Call the roll.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say the same. Motion approved five zero. Number nine, recommend a resolution that the board approve the renewal service contract with Spectrum Internet for the bus garage at fifty-nine dollars a month, and that is attachment H.
I'll move. A second.
Um, what this is, this is just a new contract for the bus garage. For E rate. Once we have tracked, we should receive sixty percent uh, refinancing or refinancing refunding. Um, through the rate program. So again, it's just to get our bus garage connected.
Call the roll please.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say the same. Motion approved five zero. Um. Number ten, recommend a resolution that the board approve the operations of schools during the pendency of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Uh, regarding school closures, and that's attachment I.
I'll move.
Second.
To go into a little detail in this, our attorney had typed this up. Um. So there's a little discussion going on, on the state level. Um, regarding whether or not. School boards should sign a resolution to approve the treasurer and the superintendent to pay supplemental contracts. Or to pay existing staff. The Ohio Revised Code says that we must pay all staff throughout the uh, pandemic there, but the auditor, they're viewing things a little bit differently. And so what this is, is this is uh, the board giving the superintendent and the treasurer the right to uh, pay employees. Um. It's also giving them the right to basically run the schools during this pandemic and not have to go through the board. In case we need to get things immediately. All the contracts will end up at the uh, for the board approval. But if we need to get something right away, whether it's safety related, whether it's um. Um, just a concern of a, of a staff member, it gives us the ability to, to make that purchase if we need to.
Okay.
All right, call the roll please.
Uh, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say the same. All right, uh, motion approved five zero. Number eleven, recommend a resolution determining to submit to the electors of the school district, the question of the renewal of an existing tax levy pursuant to sections. Fifty-seven oh five, one ninety-four to fifty-seven oh five, one ninety-seven of the Ohio Revised Code, and that is attachment J.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay, so. This is the first part. There's going to be two parts. Um, again, uh, we are going to. And again, this is up for discussion, but we're going as we stand right now um. To the ballot on November of twenty twenty for our renewal tax levy. Again, the renewal tax levy is not going to increase anyone's taxes at this time. Uh, it's just a renewal levy that, that the district uh, will need to have renewed every five years. Uh, the first part of this just is on. It basically um, it's a resolution of necessity. It's, it's saying to the county auditor that the school district needs the funds. And in our case, our renewal levy is four point two five million dollars. On a budget of twenty-four million. So without that, we would be below nineteen million dollars or just under twenty million dollars. And so that's showing the necessity need there. If the board approves this tonight, we'll have to have a second meeting to approve another uh, a resolution to proceed. And then once we pass that, then I need to take that to the board of elections and file it. So if we have a discussion down the road that we maybe want to change our direction a little bit, we have plenty of time to do that. Um, but this is just the first part in getting this uh, renewal levy on the ballot.
Any questions?
No.
All right, call the roll please.
Um, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say the same. Hearing none, uh, motion approved five zero. Number twelve, recommend a resolution to approve post issuance of compliance policy with issuance of tax exempt and tax preferred obligations. By the school district, and that is attachment K.
I'll move. I'll second.
Okay, what this is, um. This is the first part also for refinancing our bonds. I just spoke to bond counsel yesterday. Um, the bond rates have gone up slightly. Uh, currently, uh. The way the rates are right now, we would still be on track if we refinance today. To say fifty-three, fifty-four thousand dollars a year. It doesn't extend the length, the term that we currently have for our bonds, so our maturity date would stay the same. It's not like refinancing a house where they push you back another thirty years. Our ending date stays the same. And uh, the savings to the district overall would just be um, slightly over one million dollars over the course of the uh, thirty day. And um, what this is, is in order to do that, we first need to have a post issuance compliance policy. And this is just approving that policy.
Okay.
Other questions?
No.
Call the roll please.
All in favor of the compliance policy, say aye.
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 All opposed, say the same.
Thank you, Justin, for doing all that.
Yeah, no problem. No problem. Um. Number thirteen, recommend a resolution to approve authorizing the lease of school district land and facilities to a third party entity. That is our uh, cops grant, that's our certificate of participation. That's the bond that we currently have over that stuff, and that's attachment L.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Sarah, I'm sorry, or was that Crystal?
Crystal.
Okay, number thirteen here, this is um. Once we have the policy in place, this is now the board authorizing uh, the treasurer to proceed. With the refinancing of the bonds. So again, this is just one weather leg in the paperwork here to get this thing rolling.
Okay.
Roll.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say the same. Uh, hearing none, motion approved five zero. Number fourteen, we can, we can scratch number fourteen. That was um, income. That was for the post issuance compliance policy. So we can omit number fourteen there. Number fifteen. I should say, um, unless there's any. Uh, request to, to pass that, we've already done so. Okay. Uh, number fifteen, recommend a resolution to approve the interagency agreement with Lorraine County Board of Developmental Disabilities for children from birth to entrance to kindergarten, attachment N.
I'll move. A second.
I don't have anything to add to this, this one as, as written here.
All right, call the roll please.
Um, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say the same. Approve five zero. Number sixteen, recommend a resolution to approve the May twenty twenty-five year forecast, and that is attachment O.
I'll move.
All right. So this will be the May twenty twenty-five year forecast. The main purpose of the five year forecast, again, there's three main purposes for a forecast. Number one is to engage the board of education and the community in long range planning. And discussions of financial issues facing the school district. So having said that, just, just um, last Wednesday, the governor made a pretty big change to our funding. What had happened was. The state revenue was up by two hundred million dollars in March. And then once they received the numbers in April, those numbers were down by um, uh. Those numbers were down by nine hundred million dollars from forecast. So they had a seven hundred million dollar budget deficit that they had to fix. The state budget works a lot different than the federal budget. The state budget has to balance every year. So the governor was put in a tough spot. He had to balance that seven hundred million dollar deficit by June thirtieth of this year. So in order to do that. He had to make some large cuts to some large line items in that state budget. And unfortunately. K twelve funding is the largest line item in that budget. And so. Um, K twelve took a three hundred million dollar uh, reduction in their revenue compared to what they were anticipating this year. And we can discuss that further on in the presentation here. Number two, the purpose of the five year forecast is to serve as a basis for determining the school district's ability to sign contracts. Associated with continued operations. And number three, we're also to provide a method for the Department of Education and the Auditor of State's Office. To identify school districts with potential financial problems. What this is, is they take a look at that forecast and look out like around year two, year three, year four. And if they start seeing a district, a district trending in a negative direction. And they're trending to um, have a fund balance that's negative in any of those years. The Department of Education and the Auditor of State's Office will step in to make sure that that school district does not fall into a deficit spending pattern. Uh, moving on to the next slide here. So. On our forecast lines, one point zero one zero, one point zero two zero and one point zero five zero. That's going to be the local side of our revenue. And our local property taxes, they account for seven, almost seventy-one percent of our revenue. Um, believe it or not, property values today, they're just above where they were in two thousand and eight before the market crash. It's taken us twelve years to almost to get back to where we were. And our property tax collection rate this year, this is a good trend. We were seven percent higher than we typically are. And we also had a three point nine percent higher delinquent collections than we normally receive. So all, all in all, over the last ten years, our property tax revenue, it's increased by one point eight percent in the last five years. But when you stretch that out over the last ten years, we're actually down one point three percent than we were ten years ago. Now. When I do a forecast and I have to look at the next five years and anticipate what I think property values are going to do. And what I think our delinquency collection rate is going to be. Um, during this time, it's, it's very difficult to come up with those numbers. So in my forecast. I'm anticipating a ten percent reduction in our property tax collections next year. And I'm also um, forecasting a five percent reduction in twenty twenty-two. And then back to normal range in twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four due to COVID nineteen. Um. We could see a, a less of a reduction. Or we could do more than this at this point in time. It's very difficult to adjust this. This is happening so fast and in real time. It's a very difficult thing to anticipate what property tax collections are going to look like, especially with them pushing the tax deadlines back to July fifteenth. Um, the unemployment rate, everything that takes, takes effect into this. So again. On a conservative side, I'm looking at a ten percent reduction in our property tax collection rate in twenty twenty-one. Which will affect our twenty twenty-two uh, forecast. And then a five percent reduction in twenty twenty-two, which will affect our twenty twenty-three forecast. Um, this is a slide just to again show our historical property values. So again, back in two thousand and eight, we were just over four hundred and fifty-five million dollars. By twenty twelve, we were down below four hundred and twenty million. And then starting in twenty fourteen. We've been slowly inclining or uh, increasing every single year. Um, in twenty twenty-eight or twenty eighteen, we're just below that four hundred and fifty-five million mark. And in twenty nineteen, I believe we just surpassed it. Those numbers aren't officially out yet on the Department of Taxation. That's why we only have the twenty eighteen numbers. Another way to look at the historical property tax collections, again, this is going to take a snapshot of twenty uh, two thousand and nine through twenty nineteen. As you can see, in two thousand and nine, we were collecting seventeen point nine million in property tax collection. That increased eighteen point three, that increased eighteen point four. And then the next year, seventeen point three, sixteen point nine, sixteen point three. And then from twenty fourteen, you can see us rising back up again to sixteen nine, sixteen seven, sixteen eight, seventeen three and seventeen two. So we're in twenty nineteen, we collected the same amount of revenue and property taxes that we did in twenty twelve. Um, again, this is the historical, but then it's also the future projections. And you can see how this ties into uh, the assumptions that I made. So in twenty twenty, I'm anticipating us to finish this year collecting our tax revenue from our property taxes at seventeen point three million. Next year. Again, with that ten percent reduction, that's going to be dropped down to sixteen million. And then with a five percent reduction back to sixteen point three, sixteen point four. And then in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, us back to normal again. Um, again, I'm taking a lot of assumptions on this uh, by, by doing this. I'm not trying to invoke any panic or any fear. Um, unfortunately, there's just a lot of uncertainty and I'm not getting any guidance and I won't get any guidance. From the state, from the Department of Taxation, from O D E, from anybody until we finally see what these numbers look like um. Come July. So that's the local side of revenue. Now we're going to look at the state side of revenue. On the state side of revenue, there's two types. There's line one point zero three five and one point zero four five. That's restricted and unrestricted grants tonight. Um, so the restricted grants, that's going to be your cash drop, cost reimbursement, that's going to be economic disadvantaged funding. And then majority of that's also going to be your career tech funding. On the unrestricted side, those are funds received through the state foundation program, and there's no restriction. We can spend that money on anything. Um, this is the, this is the line item that Governor Wine, Dewine. Just affected. So in, in May, Governor Dewine reduced K twelve funding by three hundred million dollars. Um. Our district had our state revenue reduced by four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars. And that's going to happen on our last three foundation payments. Um, when I first created this forecast a week ago, I didn't anticipate that. So I had to go back and redo this. Um, again, I, I thought the, the, the governor would have used the rainy day fund to offset his deficits there, but. Again, he's looking long term here. So with that being said. What I need to do in a forecast now is say, okay, well, in fiscal year twenty. The state reduced our funding by four hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. What do I think is going to happen next year? Well. You know, it's a toss-up. I think next year, we're going to be in, in a similar situation. I think that the um. The state budget and the amount of foundation funding we're going to get, it's going to be reduced by six hundred and fifty thousand next year. And then what I have anticipated is five hundred and fifty thousand the next year. Two hundred thousand in fiscal year twenty-three and then returning, returning to historical averages in fiscal year twenty-four. Uh, keep in mind. Keep in mind throughout throughout this forecast, there's two by any budgets that are going to happen on top of this, so again, we have a a very difficult number to shoot for. This is all based on projections on what the state is going to anticipate their income or the revenue is going to be and how far off they're going to be from their, from their forecasts. Trying to forecast off of somebody else's forecast, off of their forecast, it's it's a very challenging thing to do. So to be conservative, I'm going to assume that it it's going to be for the next two years, right around the amount of money that we lost this year, right around that five hundred thousand dollar mark. And what I wanted to do was just to show you in dollars and percent change what's happened here, so in twenty twenty or twenty fourteen, you can see our enrollment was nineteen oh five, we received four point six million dollars in revenue. If you go to twenty nineteen, our revenue dropped slightly, we were at four point seven million dollars. You know, we really were on pace the same as we were in twenty fourteen, receiving right around that same amount of revenue. Four point six million, five million, four point eight, four point eight, four point six, four point seven million. And then twenty twenty happened, just last week, our revenue was decreased by four hundred and thirty eight thousand. It's not going to be reflected in the chart here exactly, just because I did have increases, we were getting more money this year in twenty twenty than we were in twenty nineteen. But there's the adjustment from four point seven million to four point three million this year. And then the next year, I have done to four point two eight. The following year, I I increase it a little bit back to that four point three. And then again, returning close to normal in twenty twenty three and back to normal in twenty twenty four. So again, the way it follows, similar to our property tax collection, we're going to have a couple lean years here in the next two or three years that are going to be significantly lower than what we've been used to in 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 historic there from a revenue standpoint. Uh, one point zero six zero, that's all other operating revenue, so that's going to be that's going to be tuition, that's going to be transportation, that's going to be interest on investments, it's going to return on Medicaid, payment lieu of taxes. Uh, this is forecasted to account for nine point one percent of the district's revenue. This is again tuition from other school districts who students attend our schools as well from open enrollment. And um, I do have this to decrease slightly fifteen percent over the course of the forecasted period. Again, it's hard to anticipate what's going to happen with students returning to school due to COVID nineteen. Again, it's it's just to be safe, to make sure that we're not going to uh put a number out there that's that's incredibly high. Um, I want this forecast to be as accurate as possible, but the longer you go out, the more known unknowns you have and it becomes much more challenging, so when we're looking at this forecast and we're looking at the big picture of everything, I want the board to focus on intermittent budgeting, which is just take a look at year one, year two of that budget, uh years three, four and five, I can make those adjustments when I have more information. I don't want everybody to be hung up on years three, four and five of this forecast, but I do want you to understand the importance of just how much revenue that that COVID nineteen could potentially affect in the next two, you know, one to two years here. This is a historical chart of our revenue and our forecasted revenue. So again, the district's always been right around that twenty two, twenty three, twenty four million dollar uh mark. What I have in here is twenty twenty this year, we're going to be right around a million dollars off from where we were in twenty nineteen. Last year, we collected twenty four point three million, this year, I'm anticipating right around twenty three point four. Twenty twenty one, it drops down to that twenty two million dollar mark and twenty million, then nineteen and nineteen point six starts to come back up a little bit. So we've covered the revenue side, again, the revenue side is just two things, local and state. Now we need to take a look at the expenditure side, the number one largest line item we have on the expenditure side is salaries and benefits. Uh, personal services, it's fifty percent of our budget, forty nine point one percent of our budget. Uh, this consists of employee salaries, wages, extended time off, severance pay, supplemental contracts and overtime. Personal services have remained fairly flat despite historical negotiated increases due to attrition, however, our anticipated increase since the last negotiation and I want to also say that effective March twelfth, twenty twenty, the CARES Act was implemented due to COVID nineteen. The CARES Act is a a package, a stimulus package, if you will, from the federal government. And it's a source of revenue. It's not going to entirely offset the four hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars we're losing from the state. But it will allow us to reclass and recode some items to to offsets to mitigate, if you will, some of those losses now. The the CARES Act is only going to be, at least right now, it's for fiscal year twenty and fiscal year twenty twenty one. And so what I did in this forecast, because I'm not sure if I'm going to be able to use all that money this fiscal year, I assumed a fifty thousand dollar reduction in salaries that I'll be able to reclass to that CARES Act money. And then next year, I'll reclass the remaining of it, so we we received two hundred and twenty one thousand dollars in the CARES Act. I'm anticipating again fifty thousand this year to be reclassed and then the remaining of that to be reclassed next year. I also wanted to let you know too that the forecast, as it sits right now on the expenditure side, it's assuming staffing level staying consistent, it it's assuming everything's staying flat right now. Again, there's there's so many uncertainties, I don't know what school is going to look like in the fall. Um, I don't know what programs we're going to need, what programs we're going to need to increase, what programs may need to be decreased. So right now, it's a very difficult time to put a a forecast together when there's so many uncertainties uh for next fall, so to play safe, we just wanted to show on the revenue side, the the effects that we are going to have regarding COVID nineteen's effects to revenue. And then on the expenditure side, I'm going to assume it's going to be staffing levels as they were in twenty twenty and then we can make adjustments down the road there. So our historical and forecasted salaries in twenty fourteen, they were eleven point five million. In twenty fifteen, they had increased to twelve point two, it looks like we had made some adjustments, we brought it back down to eleven point three, where it stayed fairly consistent there. And it'll stay fairly consistent as well. Twenty twenty, we're looking at eleven point eight million, twenty twenty one, eleven point eight million. And then in twenty twenty two, increasing slightly to twelve and then twelve point two and twelve point five. So after we take a look at salaries, we want to make sure um our next largest line item, the benefits are covered, that's going to be three point zero two zero on your forecast. Benefits account for nineteen point four percent of our budget. Uh, we did receive a six and a half percent increase in our health insurance costs this next fiscal year. We did receive a premium holiday this fiscal year as well as receiving discounts on workers' compensation. Mainly because we're a drug free campus, we receive a discount for going green and we've received other discounts for going five years or more without a late payment. Again, the forecast assumes staffing level staying consistent with fiscal year twenty numbers. And then I'll show you historical line here. Again, our our benefits have stayed fairly consistent over the years. Even in the forecasted years, they're staying fairly consistent, they're increasing at a rate of six and a half percent. But again, that's a larger, that's a large assumption, they may not go up that much. It may go up more than that, it's hard to say right now, but historically, uh on average, the best practice is to put a insurance increase right around six and a half to seven percent. Next line, three point zero three zero is purchase services, this accounts for almost nineteen percent, this is eighteen point six percent of our forecasted uh district expenditures. Purchase services are, you know, mainly tuition paid to external providers or utilities, tuition expenses, community schools, open enrollment out. Just some numbers up here to 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 share with everyone, the district paid out six hundred and eleven thousand in fiscal year nineteen for open enrollment out. We also paid a hundred and fifty one thousand to community school transfers, sixty seven thousand in scholarship transfers and three hundred and seventy six thousand to the S C. So all in all, this totals one point two million in revenue, or I should say in costs that are leaving with the students transferring out of our district. Here's our purchase services, historical and forecasted. As you can see, I don't have very much of an increase, I think I have a three percent increase uh in the historical side of things. And again, this is just a lot of service contracts, those were the um North Points in the in the Lorraine County S Cs that the board approved tonight. Uh, again, it just depends on what type of services we have and what type of students we have entering into our district that may need additional services that that we ourselves can't provide. And also has a large, large amount with um students selecting to be educated outside of our district. So line six point zero one zero, this is the main line that we want to take a look at when we're looking at a five year forecast, this is our revenues over expenditures. And this is going to give you a good sense of the school district's fiscal health. Now, a positive number indicates the school district spent with this, within its revenue for that fiscal year. A couple of things here now, now due to COVID nineteen and the balance of the state budget, Governor Dewine reduced the last two months of revenue to a million by four hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars. And by doing it so late, he left the district with such little time to reduce expenditures. By the governor announcing it when he did, not that he could have done it sooner, we we don't have any way to to mitigate that loss in revenue by reducing our expenditures. Where we've already set the course and there's not much we can change in two months of school to uh reduce that cost. The state budget adjustments are anticipated to continue until fiscal year twenty three and the forecast assumes an increase in property tax delinquencies. Uh, because of the uncertainty of what schools will look like in the fall, the forecast assumes no staffing changes at this time and reflects a cash balance ending in twenty twenty four with school operating the same way it did in fiscal year twenty. Again, that's that's a an assumption that I'm making today. That doesn't mean that that's what has to happen. Administration is going to need to talk and make sure that that's that's the way that we want to go with this. But as of today, to put a forecast together, this is what I thought would be the best way to do to to get a good look at our financial picture down the road. So this line shows us um our revenue over expenditures graphed out. This is without our renewal levy and this is why I wanted to show this graph. From fiscal year, really from from fiscal year twenty fourteen all the way through twenty twenty, the district is has had revenue over expenditure with the exception of fiscal year twenty fifteen. Twenty fifteen was the year the um district moved the board offices and had some large expenses there. And so they went over their revenue. But the district has done a a great job of keeping its revenues over its expenditures. However, once our renewal levy expires, you can see, starting in twenty twenty two, that the district really starts having revenue or expenditures over revenue significantly. I wanted to put that on a graph just to show you what we look like without our renewal levy and then graph, the next graph shows you with the renewal levy. Again, we're still going to be having expenditures over revenue, assuming everything operates today the same way for the next five years, which which we know, um you know, that's what administration is tasked with doing, making sure that this outcome doesn't happen. But having that renewal levy greatly offsets the amount of expenditure of revenue there. And then just the last comments here, I should say the the forecast and the snapshot. So looking at our total revenue, I've included the renewal levy revenues in the total revenue lines there for twenty twenty, twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four. What we're looking like is for this year in twenty twenty to be slightly over one hundred and eighteen thousand dollars more than we brought in in revenue and in our expenditures. Um, I'm anticipating our ending fund balance to be right around fifteen point four million. And through this forecast period with again anticipating ten percent reduction in property tax collections, a five percent reduction in twenty twenty two. Uh, five hundred thousand dollar or five hundred and fifty thousand dollar reduction next year in state funding, uh six hundred thousand, six hundred and fifty thousand in state funding the next year and then two hundred thousand in twenty twenty three. The district, um you can see the results of operation there going from one hundred and eighteen thousand to two million roughly each year in expenditures over revenue. And our ending fund balance going from fifteen point four million down to about seven and a half million. Now again, these are a lot of assumptions, this looks like a very large decrease in fund balance. You know, what would I, again, looking at that intermittent fasting, I plan on updating this forecast the minute we have new information. Right now, due to the Ohio revised code, treasurers must submit a forecast in May and also in in November. It'll be my recommendation to do a forecast snapshot like this sooner than November. Especially with the amount of things that are changing, just last, I mean, for example, just last week at this time, all school districts thought that they were going to be receiving their entire foundation aid and they didn't. You know, that our forecast went from being positive three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to negative one hundred and eighteen thousand dollars in one. So again, as things change and as things evolve and as as we get more guidance from the state and from the health departments and we start to get a better idea of what schools are going to look like next year, I will update this forecast because again, we want to operate and make decisions on the most, most recent information and not wait three or four months to change it. So final comments I have here, COVID nineteen, it it's going to have lasting effects on the district's revenue. And at this time, we're not in a position to accurately predict how long the pandemic will last or its effects on our state and local economy. Uh, my recommendation, as I said before, is to look into intermittent forecasting at most two years out. And the uncertainty surrounding the state's decision in the next fiscal year will be greatly influenced on the state of the economy and also having a vaccine. And so again, that's the way the forecast looks today. I'm not saying it's 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 inaccurate, I'm not saying it's a hundred percent accurate either, it's the best that we can do with the information that we have today. And um, again, I I will update this whenever I have new information to share. Are there any questions?
No, thank you, Justin, that was a thorough.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right, uh, call the roll then, please.
All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. I should say, say the same. Hearing none, motion approved five zero. And I think that is it for me.
Great, thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
All right, next item, uh, items for discussion, anything that you want to bring up for discussion?
No.
No, okay, Phil, you good?
You're muted, Phil.
We mentioned the need to uh talk about that renewal levy. Do we want to say anything about that?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I, you know, I think Justin's talked to us before that if we go for it in November, that's the best rather than waiting too late to go for it, correct, Justin, I mean?
Yeah, I mean, you know, I the, I don't know if if anything's going to look any better or worse in in a year from now, and I think that you know, the sooner we we know what our citizens want to support, the the better we can plan for it.
Right.
Our hope will be that under, uh, we know this are, these are tough circumstances and very unusual times. But I think that our message is the same as it was before, that this is not new money.
Right.
This is just money that's going to be needed to support the schools and to not have that money would be more devastating than this cut that we're already going to have to make, if we would couple that on top of not passing this Cut that we're already going to have to make. If we would couple that on top of not passing this renewal levy, I couldn't imagine what the school district would look like.
Right.
So that's just a renewal of money that has already been. In the books or on the books and approved, and it's not meaning new money for taxpayers. And I think that it's going to be important for Justin and I. Repeatedly in our district to get out there and emphasize this to the community that we, we need their support on this.
I agree.
And it's not going to cost them any more money. It's just renewing what the schools will need to continue running the way they, they will need to.
Right.
And I agree with Justin that we should go forward with this renewal in November by taking. What, what we hope would be the first and only shot at it and pass it.
No, I agree. I think we should go for it in November as well.
Yep.
So, Justin, you said before. We approved the first step for going forward with to get that renewal levy on the ballot and we would need another meeting to approve the next step. Does that have to be before our meeting in June or?
I, we can do it in the June meeting.
Okay. Okay. Right, any other?
We have two of them in and I need to have that information into the Board of Elections prior to, I believe it's August fifth.
Okay. All right. Any other thoughts on the renewal levy or any other discussion items? Nope. Okay. Onto the consent agenda. Your glasses on for that. Consent agenda, the superintendent and treasurer recommend that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda items. Action by the Board of Education and adoption of the consent agenda means that all items are adopted. By one single motion unless a member of the board, the treasurer, or the superintendent requests that any such item be removed from the consent agenda. And voted upon separately. Number one, minutes of the March ninth, twenty twenty regular meeting. Number two, approve Michael Ross, Rostis as a trustee to the Board of Trustees of Ritter Public Library. Three, approve the following employment action maternity leave for Caitlin Arnt. Four, one year certified contract for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one school year to the following. Jason Bosch, STEAM STEM teacher at VHS. And number five, a one year summer twenty twenty contract to Joshua Parsons, a technology helper and Noah Siders, a technology helper. Anything that you need to have removed from consent agenda?
No.
No. Right, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll move.
A second.
Anything for discussion? Any questions?
No.
Okay, call the roll, please.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say the same. Motion approved five zero.
All right, next item, number twelve, public participation. Due to the fact that we are doing a. Virtual, you've got that on there, okay. Any comments or questions can be sent to that email address that's listed. And you will receive a response within forty eight hours of your email. Note that this is a temporary email address. It'll be shut down following the conclusion of the meeting. So if anybody out there has any questions, comments, concerns, please send your email to that. One listed, Board of Educator, B O E at Vermillion Schools dot org. Item thirteen, date and location of upcoming board meetings. Regular meeting of Monday, June eighth. At seven P M, regular meeting of Monday, July thirteenth. At seven P M and regular meeting of Monday, August thirteenth. At seven P M. Item fourteen, recommended. I'm sorry?
August tenth.
Is that what it, a Monday? Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Everybody good with those?
Yes.
Okay. Fourteen, recommend resolution to move into executive session for the purpose of matters required to be kept confidential by federal law or rules or state statutes.
I'll move.
A second. Other all?
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say the same. Motion approved five zero to enter executive session at eight fifty five P M.
Alright, motion to adjourn.
Everybody.
Alright, I'll put Sarah second.
Yeah. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, motion adjourned, ten fifteen.